Alrighty, thank you. Thank you for coming to this evening's GRPS Board of Education meeting. We do welcome and appreciate your presence at this meeting. We ask that you put your cellphones on silence. If anyone would like to make public comment at either the agenda or non-agenda time, there are cards at the entrance way. If you complete those, our board assistants will pick those up and call you down when it is appropriate. Otherwise, we do ask you to arise for the pleasure of allegiance. Ms. Grant, could you call the robe, please?
Yes, I'm going to do it.
President.
Ms. Sharkey.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
President.
Dr. Baker is excused, Ms. Davis is excused, Dr. Flores.
President.
Ms. Grant present, Ms. Lewis.
Present.
And President Ross.
President.
Yes, it looks like we have some great celebrations this evening. So, Dr. Robey, I'll turn that over to you if you want to proceed with that.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It feels good to be in June, like weather, finally. We do have lots of celebrations as we are closing out the 21-22 school year, and it's always just an honor to celebrate the work and commitment of not only our scholars but our dedicated staff. And one of the first celebrations that we're going to do of many this evening is celebrating the beautiful artwork that represents our culture and community. And Ms. Maggie Malone, Director of Fine Arts in Academic Programming, will come forward to introduce our honoree as well as his teacher this evening.
And as Ms. Malone comes down, I again forgot to ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. May I get one, please?
(inaudible).
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Ms. Malone, I apologize.
That's totally fine. Thank you and welcome, Dr. Robey, President Ross, and Board of Education. It's very exciting that we're here today to talk about an amazing celebration of one of our awesome artists at Ottawa Hills High School. Some of you may have been hearing rumors about our new superstar artist, Kahari King. McDonald's had a competition, and this was a statewide competition, and they were looking for rebranding. And McDonald's' black and positively golden efforts were really strongly promoted by local McDonald's owner Matthew and Lori Schultz. And we had several entries, but Mr. Kahari King here was selected as the statewide winner. So he won the top award, which is really amazing for a lot of reasons. One, he got some cash, which is always a hit. But also, I mean, this I've never really heard even as a professional artist. His work is going to be featured at 56 McDonald's in our state, statewide. I mean, how awesome. You know, and our very own student, Kahari King, I mean, how amazing for him. What a great honor. So we're just so proud of Kahari and his art teacher, Ms. Tiffany Oliver, who is one of our art teachers at Ottawa. And Tiffany, is there anything you'd like to share about the competition?
Yes. I was very thankful to hear that Ottawa Hills was a selected, one of the four selected and chosen schools to participate in the competition. A lot of students put forth a great effort to communicate not only themselves and their community directly to them, but the positivity in the community and the Grand Rapids all together. They turned in a lot of great work, submitted about 10 or 11 projects, and this one took it. So I'm very proud of his work, his individual work, and how well his art skills and growth came together in this one piece. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, yep. And this is Kahari's winning piece behind you. He also brought the original, which he has up here, and maybe he'll hold it up so everybody can see it. And also, I would be remiss, he's also here today with his mom, and it's her birthday today. So happy birthday! We're proud of you, Kahari.
Yes.
I can't wait to see what you do next.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Kahari is just very humble, and I will say with his family, they were there for the time that he received the award, and just the love and the pride that they have in this young man. And so for Mrs. King, you know, what better birthday present can you get to have your son being recognized? So congratulations to you. So our next...
Do you mind if we see it?
Oh, yeah. We should, should we get it?
Show us your...
Awesome. Wow. You mind taking a photo with us, Kahari? That would be good. As a group photo, that'd be great.
This is good. This is good.
Let's get you squeezed in a little bit more.
Cheeseburger.
Hold on. Alright. Everyone ready? What can I mean? Alright, I've got a couple here. Thanks.
Alrighty. We have some superstar employees to recognize here, huh?
Absolutely. And so as we are closing out our school year, we have employees, I think longevity speaks to the grit and the perseverance and just the dedication that many of our employees have demonstrated over time. And we have employees who have been here a number of years. And, you know, it's rare that people begin a career and stay in the same location. A lot of times, we move from place to place, and many of our employees have been here for a number of years, and I think that that needs to be lifted up and acknowledged. And so I'm going to ask our executive directors to come forward to celebrate those employees, Ms. Toni Moore, and Ms. Chaney, and Ms. Dr. Maida Gunnel.
(inaudible).
I wasn't sure who was going first. So, Madam Superintendent, President Ross, and Distinguished Members of the Board, it is my distinct honor and pleasure to introduce Helen Metcalf Gillespie. This is a family affair for her, and we are so happy and proud of that. Not only her family family, but her Mulek Park family as well. Principal Thomas Standifer, she has siblings here, math coach Robin Bentley, and I just can't speak enough to the impact that she's had, not only on our scholars, but the teachers that she's mentored, the principals that she's mentored over the years. And I was going to invite John Hemhold up here because he is a student, former student, I should say, at Shawmont Hills. So yes, began her career at Shawmont Hills and has been at Mulek Park for a good, long time. And I think I heard her whisper that she has served under seven, is that right, superintendents?
Now eight.
Now eight. Eight superintendents. So she certainly does have a lot of longevity and lots of well, well-deserved congratulations. So thank you all for the round of applause, and thank you more for the great job that you did.
You want to go next? You want to go next?
I'll go.
Good evening, Dr. Robey, President Ross, and Board members. This evening, I have the pleasure to introduce to you Cynthia Jordan. Cynthia has been with us, GRPS, for 40 years. She started her career at Ottawa Hills, Ottawa Elementary, pre-primary and paraprofessional. And she has served in different elementary schools in the district, and I'm so honored and proud to have her here tonight with us. So Cynthia, congratulations.
President Ross, Dr. Robey, and Distinguished Board members, I too count it an honor to present tonight Lisa Bowerman, who was hired in August of 1982. What were we doing in 1982? She currently serves as a teacher consultant, but over her 40 years, she has worked at Mulek Park. She's been an itinerant resource room teacher, so worked in multiple school buildings, and currently as teacher consultant, she works across the district. And when I tell you this lady works, she works. And Lisa is just a tremendous asset to the district, to the buildings that she serves and the students that she serves, and we are just very, very, very fortunate to have her as part of our team.
Looks like you have some gifts you're going to deliver those, so?
And if we could also take a picture with the honorees, I think that would be appropriate.
If all three of you could come on down, please. Lisa, Helen, and Cynthia, that'd be great.
I don't know about that. No.
Alright, since all our final leg of our celebrations is to celebrate our spring athletic scholars. And as you know, our scholars are just shining in so many different ways. And I'm bringing Mr. Kurt Johnson forward, our district athletic director, and the athletic directors for both Union and Ottawa Hills to come forward to celebrate the success of our scholars. So, Mr. Johnson.
Awesome students, awesome staff. Let's see if we can keep that awesome train rolling.
Keep it going.
But good evening, President Ross, and Superintendent Dr. Robey, and Distinguished Board members. It gives me great honor and pleasure to be with you once again for celebrations. You know, there's a good old gospel song that says, "Give me my flowers while I can yet still smell them, so that I can see the beauty that they bring." We thought it would be appropriate and proper to give our coaches and scholar athletes their flowers while they are yet still with us this school year. Even though all the sports season have not concluded yet, we wanted to share with you the accomplishments that they have been able to achieve despite all the challenges that are always before us in athletics. So tonight with me, I have Brody Larson, who leads up our middle school division and does double time in elementary sports, Marcus Harris, the athletic director for Ottawa Hills, and Justin Walker, athletic director for Union High School, and they will come in that order.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity for allowing us to share this evening. I have two quick points that I really just want to touch on. The first is regarding the participation of our scholar athletes at both the elementary and the middle school level. We didn't know what to expect coming into this school year with all the challenges that we faced the last few years, but I'm happy to say we were able to participate, all of our sports went on as planned at our levels. During the 21-22 school year, we had 1,743 elementary scholars participating in the four sports that we offer as a district. At the middle school level, we had 1,630 scholars participating in our 13 separate programs throughout the district. Secondly, GRPS had the opportunity to host the West Michigan Regional Middle School Track Meet for the second consecutive year. This year's meet doubled in size from approximately 15 teams to around 30 teams, teams coming from around the area, bringing some of the top talent to compete at Housman Field. I want to thank our meet directors, Dan Ebride and Jolinda Lucas, as well as all the staff and volunteers that made this a top-notch event. Our middle school scholar athletes also competed at this event, and I would just like to take a quick moment to recognize those that earned top-five finishes. In the boys' division, we had Logan Tyson from Elger finished fifth in the 100 meters. The relay team of Kelton Hoover from City, Joshua Corton Haven from City, Oliver Carrasco from GR Montessori, and Zaden Madaco of Westwood finished fourth in the 4x400 relay. In the girls' division, we had, in the 200-meter dash, Adeline DeRoux and Vivian Alfonso, both of City, finished third and fourth respectively. Siriana Hodges, Avante Thompson, Heaven Hensley of Elger, and Kate Whisser of City finished fifth in the 4x100 relay. And in the 4x200 relay for the girls, it was Siriana Hodges, Vivian Alfonso, Adeline DeRoux, and Zanay Richardson of MLK finishing fifth. And Adeline DeRoux also finished fourth place in the long jump at the regional event. So congratulations to the top-five finishers and all of the scholar athletes that competed this spring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, are some of them here, or?
No, they're just various reasons.
Okay.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Robey, President Ross, Distinguished Board members. Thank you for having us here again today to celebrate our spring scholar athletes. At Ottawa Hills, we had a tremendous spring season. In the OK Gold All-Conference, we had 18 total student athletes, encompassing six different sports that made All-Conference in the OK Gold. Girls tennis, Bridget Quail was Spring Athlete of the Week for MLive the week of April 25th. Also from the tennis team, Joanna Workman was All-Conference this year. She's also valedictorian at Grand Rapids Museum High School as well. Track and field, track and field had another tremendous, tremendous season. We had, in the OK Gold, we had 13 of our athletes that were All-Conference from track and field. Our girls' track team won back-to-back OK Gold Conference Championships this year, so they did a tremendous job. OK Gold Conference Champions, we had 13 boys' track long jump champions in the 400-meter, 800-meter, 3200 meters, and the 4x800-meter relay team. Girls track and field, OK Gold Champions in the long jump, the 800 meters, 1600 meters, 3200 meters, 4x100 meters, and the 4x800 meter relay. Also, we had several students that qualified for the state finals, which were recent, this past Saturday, which I'll get into. The MHSA Regionals, Regional Champions, which was hosted at Portis Central a couple weeks ago. Lucius Hoskins in the long jump was a regional champion. Benner Anderson in the 1600 meters, 3200 meters, and the 4x800 meter relay. 4x800 meter relay team, Juan David Hernandez, Liam Waters, Waziri, and Benner Anderson. Also, Selma Anderson won the 3200 meters and also was part of the 4x800 meter relay team along with Nia Weiner, Reese Hansen, and Adit Dua. There were several school records broken this year at Ottawa Hills. To name a few, Benner Anderson broke the 800-meter record, the 1600-meter record, which is an OK Gold Conference record. He also broke the 3200-meter record, which is a top-15 time in the state of all time. The boys' 3200-meter relay record was also broken of the group that I mentioned earlier. Selma Anderson, 1600-meter, fastest timed by a GRPS athlete of all time. Also, part of that 3200-meter relay team that I mentioned earlier also broke the school record this year. All-state athletes this past Saturday, again, the boys' 4x800 meter relay placed third place in the State Division One. Also, we have a state champion with us here today. Benner Anderson won the 3200 meters this past Saturday as a state champion, Division One. Also, I do want to recognize some other good performances at the state meet this past Saturday. Alicia Robinson took 20th in the 200 meters and 18th in the long jump. Our girls' 4x100 meter relay team took 15th place, consisting of Taylor Pierce James, Alicia Robinson, Javea Sanders, and Samaje Robertson. Our girls' 4x800 meter relay team consists of Selma, Nia, Reese, and Selma, placed 13th. Selma Anderson placed 12th place in the 3200 meter. And last but not least, Lucius Hoskins took 20th place in the long jump. And just to wrap up, we had, from our tremendous track and field team, we had three of our athletes sign, committed to play at the collegiate level with Adit Dua going to Michigan State University, Juan David Hernandez Aquinas College, and Alicia Robinson going to Harris Style State University to participate in track and basketball. So definitely. And I do want to recognize some of our tremendous coaches we do have here with us today, with Coach Andre Posey for girls and boys tennis, Coach Jacks, and then also Coach Ebride as well, who is with us today. Could we have all of our Ottawa Hills athletes and coaches stand? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Robey, President Ross, and Board of Education members. First, I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come briefly share some of the celebrations we had at Union High School during the 2022 spring season. During the past, this past spring season, Union had five OK Green First Team All-Conference athletes and four OK Green Honorable Mention athletes. Along with those All-Conference athletes, we had a number of student athletes who have either committed or have offers still pending to play at the collegiate level. Genesis Kemp for boys' basketball will be attending Bay College. Twainay Smith for football will be attending Ellsworth Community College. Sitia Luna for soccer will be attending Davenport University. And Zanaya McSpadden, who will be a preferred walk-on at Valparaiso University. And Christina Mays, along with Denzel Gonzala and Devin Rainey, will also have multiple junior and community colleges' offers as well. Along with Genesis, Zanaya, and Christina, they all have received an invitation to play in the West Michigan High School All-Star Basketball Game happening at Davenport this week. It's tomorrow, they're at practice right now, actually. So it replaces the Tuasi Tournament. So that was one of the big tournaments that have, used to happen in this area, and so we have not one, most schools may get one or two, we have three athletes participating in that event. So that's going to be a really big event for our school district to be a part of tomorrow and on the 8th. Our last celebration is for the Union girls tennis program. The State of Michigan Tennis Coaches Association selects 10 schools to be a part of the academic all-state team. In Division One, there are 327 schools who are able to be eligible for this. Union High School finished in the top 10, they were ninth out of 327. So that goes to show you the tremendous work that our staff are doing, the coaches, the tutors, the teachers, our board, Mr. Johnson, everywhere from the top down, we really appreciate the support, and we cannot have a top-10 academic program without your all support. So we thank you. Thank you.
I just have to slide in a closing comment. I need Coach Dan Ebride to stand. Coach Dan Ebride really exhibits what we expect in a varsity-level coach. He coaches varsity high school, but nothing in this district in track and field moves kindergarten through 12th grade unless his hands are on it. And that's what a varsity coach does. A varsity coach develops and feeds himself quality players prior to arriving in high school. And I dare say, if you asked him right now, who was the top third or fourth grader, he can rattle off the name off the top of his head. Nothing moves in track and field in this district unless his hands are on it. But also, another tidbit, Dan Ebride in 1984 was the first-place champion in the 3200-meter run. And years later, he is coaching an athlete who has taken the same honor, first place in the 3200-meter run. Congratulations, Danny Bright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great celebrations, thank you. Thanks to all the athletes for representing as well, for sure. Thank you very much. This just moves us through our, moves us through our agenda and public comment. This public comment section is for Board of Agenda items only, with the exception of GRA representation. Ms. Mary Bowles, if you'd like to come forth and offer your comment.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
President Ross, Superintendent Robey, and Board members, I'm just here to give a little bit of a bargaining update because we are in the middle of negotiating our contract. Bargaining has been going on for 11 weeks, and we've had six sessions, meeting about every two weeks. This year's negotiations involve language changes and updates and financial and benefits proposals, and the process is slow. I have said from the first session that GRA's goal is to create a contract that will improve learning conditions and working conditions for our students and members. One of those goals is to be competitive with our colleagues in surrounding districts, the same ones who are hiring our educators daily. We would love a contract that respects the work we do and the extra that we give, often taking away from our own families. Our goal is to create a place that is welcoming and supportive to educators, that encourages innovative teaching and high-quality instruction. Our students are entitled to that. Our goal is to create a contract that our educators deserve and our students will benefit from. That means that it should be comparable and competitive with the surrounding districts. We need to fully staff our buildings, and to have that impact, we need for our students to learn and grow. We all would love to have a summer to refresh and not spend our time at the bargaining table. A settled, fair contract will attract educators to fill the positions sooner to Grand Rapids than later. to fill the positions sooner to Grand Rapids than later. Things need to move faster to get the goals we have to allow for hiring and to allow the educators to focus on preparing for the next school year. I could go into the details of what's happening at the table, but I hold all hope that this will be a fair, progressive contract. I hope that administration and you, the school board, are focused on the same end. More educators to fill the classrooms, fewer people in offices, a salary that lifts us above the lowest-paid educators in Kent County, and respect and support to be able to do our best work for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us to our reports for this evening. I'll start with the Secretary's report, if there is one.
I just have a quick update for meeting schedules. Policy Committee will be meeting Wednesday, June 15th, at 5:00 PM here in the Board Chambers, and that is all.
Thank you. Move to our committee chair updates. Ms. Davis is excused this evening. Mr. Raul Matias, are you prepared to present an academic achievement or committee update?
I am. I'm reporting on the May 4th Academic Committee that we had. Jonathan Harper updated us in the Instructional Council. City is looking at a Global Politics IB course. It'll pilot it on the fall of '22. Finance presented on current pilots, songwriting, music appreciation and music production. Student interest is high and they are going well. Riverside Middle School and for Ottawa Hills. Also, we had a brief strategic update on SRR2 expenditures update. And the SRR funds are being used for Tier One and Two and curriculum and support renewals. A detailed list is available on Board Docs for Board members if they want to look at it. Also, we looked at the Public Act 48 of 2021, Section 98B, a presentation by Steve Petros. Requires districts to measure growth through the year with a medium dip in late January. MAP growth is used for this. It must be reported by school, subgroups, gender, I'm sorry, grade and demographics. Also, the KISD, our school data, was used to get reports and show how student growth from fall to winter. And then the K8 growth, goals, focus on academic growth, focus on math and reading, the 50th percentile for all students and subgroups. This would be indicate of growth as well. And then the K8 average is 44.9 for reading and 46.5 for math. Graduation results, Rodney Lewis also reported saying that there was a slight dip this year in graduation rates, which is the case in most school districts statewide. Statewide, 87.47 with 7.65 dropout rate. GRPS, our district is 78.93 with 6.47 dropout rate. Our drop from 20 to 20, 20, the years, 20 to 21 is less than many school districts around us with drops in graduation rate from 6.47 to 8.6. And that's all that we have to report on. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Ms. Shaki.
Thank you, President Ross. Yes, the Finance Committee met last month and received our purchasing agenda, which is in the Board Packet this evening. By and large, just some adjustments to blanket orders, but also numerous software license renewals for the next academic year. Those come through at this time of year to ensure that we are ready to go for the next academic year. And then we received the budget amendments, as is customary this time of year. I know those are later on the agenda, so you will hear about those in just a few.
Thank you. Well, while we have you, about the Ad Hoc Facilities Committee update.
Great. Thank you again. We met just last week and the work of the Facilities Committee really coming off of the Board Retreat, which was focused on beginning to reimagine what the district might look like over the next several years to decades. So we came together to work on two items. One, to create a values-based decision-making criteria as we begin the work of developing our next Facilities Master Plan. And so we together as a committee created draft criteria that we voted to move forward to the work session on June 13. So we, as the Board of Education, will then work through that together. And that criteria, first and foremost, is in alignment with the strategic plan. And that all along has been really the goal of this Board of Ed, was to develop a strategic plan that was focused on scholar outcomes and scholar success. And once we had committed as a district and community about what matters most, our scholars and staff, we would then follow that with a Facilities Master Plan. So that is where we are in that work. Additionally, we developed a draft timeline for creation of the new Facilities Master Plan that was approved by the committee, which will then be presented to the Board of Ed at our work session on the 13th for their final approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Takes us to the Superintendent's report.
All right. So good evening, everyone. A couple of announcements. I know that several of my team members are coming forward, but I want to make sure that I tee up a couple of items. As you know, we had a conversation earlier in the school year and we've done a family survey and student survey around school uniforms versus dress code. And we have made a decision that we will be moving into the '22, '23 school year with a dress code policy versus a school uniform policy. That information will be communicated fully to our families this week as we are closing out our '21, '22 school year. And we also will be outlining what the dress code policy will be. That does need to go before our, our Board policy around what that language is. But typically with dress code policies, it's making sure that clothing is appropriate and decent for outside of the home wear. And we'll make sure that we'll define that for families. But we want to make sure that that information is communicated to our families. And we have a detailed letter kind of unpacking how we got to that, that decision as it aligns with our strategic themes around voice as well as ensuring creating equitable systems to distribute needs, distribute services around our student needs. And so we want to be sensitive to that. And one of the things that you'll hear about later as we start to unpack our strategic plan, we are really very committed to what this looks like in real time with real action. And so we certainly appreciate all of the feedback that we receive from not only our scholars, but our families and our staff and our administrators. And we feel at this time that is the right direction to move forward. I'm going to invite Mr. Larry Johnson and Mr. Atkins up to talk about some summer safety activities. As we are preparing, we are on the eve of what will be summer break. And we want to ensure that not only our families know what are activities to keep their young scholars engaged over the next two and a half months, but also some additional things that we will also be supporting our staff around summer safety and in preparation for the '21, excuse me, '22, '23 school year. So, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Atkins.
Good evening, President Ross, Dr. Robey and other distinguished Board members. From the safety and security side, we just happy to announce that we've selected five training dates of this summer for staff to become involved in some additional security training. It is our intent to not only record these trainings, but once they're recorded and edited, then make those available virtually for those that cannot attend in person. In addition, we will continue our weekly video series. We will cut that down to two a month. Instead of weekly, we're doing bi-weekly to give some additional information on school safety and security. And then right before the start of school, our entire security staff will be back for at least four days of intense training on, on safety protocols to ensure that they know the latest protocols prior to restarting the school year. We are also, any new hires that we have, we're trying to work with HR to get those individuals hired so they can participate in that training at the start of the year, rather than jumping on in the middle of the year. In addition to that, we're working with one of our local providers, entertainment providers in the community. They have six locations in West Michigan, three directly in, in Grand Rapids. Just looking at what opportunities can be provided for safe space for kids as they travel through our community. They are, they're always working with our kids. Our kids are in and out of their establishments. And we just want to continue to work and meet with them to see how we can enhance that a little bit better and opportunities for our kids. The Public Safety Alliance in the city of Grand Rapids, out of, it's a subcommittee out of Silent Observer, is also offering several safe spaces, basketball opportunities as well as chess clubs throughout the community and some of the community gyms. And then we in Grand Rapids is looking to see if we can open up a couple of our gyms later in the evening, supervised, of course, to offer safe locations for our youth to be over the summer months, to get them off the streets into a safe, supervised environment where recreational programs can occur. Mel?
And to support that too, we know one thing we can do with scholars is keep them engaged during the summer. And so really, two things are happening from, from this lens. We have our annual summer school. It's happening June 27th through July 28th, Monday through Thursday. It's at 10 different locations across the city. And we're expecting just over 2,900 of our scholars to participate. They're going to be focused on ELA, math and either project-based learning slash SEL, social motion learning, that at the K8 level, and then credit recovery at the high school level. Then what, then we're excited to, we added this year with the support of, you know, the team, is on the GRPS website, just got it added, under Quick Links, under News and Events, we have summer camps and activities. And so it ranges from Girl 1000 to Partnership with the Public Library, KISD Summer Camps, you know, all these additional camps that may happen. So you can either do both. You know, you can either, you know, attend summer school if that's not an option. You know, there's a lot of different events with pools are open. And all, all those things are in one place. And what it's, what it's going to be is added to social media. Email's coming out and all the, the normal channels of communication is going to be coming out with a lot of information around what to do this summer.
May I ask a question, Mr. Johnson? Are our guards, who are our security people who go into the schools, are they armed?
No, they're not.
Okay, good. One of the things that we are very sensitive to as we are watching some of the things that are taking place around our state as well as around our country, we want to make sure that we are giving information to our larger community around how to keep kids and scholars engaged over the summer. And we know that one size does not fit all. And so that's one of the reasons why we have that hyperlink to our website so that if families are not necessarily participating in summer school or they have other activities that are taking place in the summer, they do have other resources because it's about keeping our young people engaged and also keeping them safe. And we want to make sure that we are giving information to our families and being sensitive to that. And then with respect to kind of training for staff, the additional layer that Mr. Johnson did not speak on, but we are also working through as we are gearing up for the '22, '23 school year. What people don't always realize is once the school year kind of shuts down, you start gearing up for the next school year almost immediately. And to kind of have some structures and systems in place for each building with our building leaders to make sure that staff are actively doing that technical training around what safety measures are in place. And it's not just about violent safety, but it's just any safety measures with fire or weather-related issues. Because when an emergency or something happens, that's the wrong time to figure out that people don't know what to do and to have some structures in place. And we've talked about as a team, how to build that in at the beginning of the school year, but then also having reviews with, at staff meetings and such so that people do feel adequately prepared. But then people can do the additional support and training. Those who want to do that deeper dive will have that opportunity to do so on their, at their own time. And we offer not only a stipend for all staff, they also are able to get credit CEUs is what I always call them, but it's that relicensor credit that anybody in the education profession does for their relicensor. And so we're trying to be sensitive to the needs and also flexibility. And we've talked about other alternatives as we continue to expand the professional learning for all adults because we want to make sure that people feel adequately prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next part of our presentation is our legislative update. Mr. Helmuth will do that. And then also he'll go into the strategic plan, kind of the final draft. And we'll talk about kind of our rollout as we renew, not renew, that's not the right word, kind of reintroduce the finalized version as we have spent the last year or so engaging voice and going back to our community and asking for additional feedback and kind of tweaking and refining our strategic plan. And it is, as I've said at many different meetings, this is our strategic plan. And so when I say our, our community, it is not my personal. It's not the Board's. It is our district community, excuse me, our district strategic plan. And our goal is to make sure that people have information as to what that looks like over the next five years. And we want it to be an actionable plan where people can actually see evidence of the work that we are trying to achieve. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Helmuth.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Robey, President Ross, members of the Board. There's a lot in, in, happening in Lansing. Not last week when they were off session because they were up on the Mackinac Conference for the Detroit Policy Conference. But I want to start with this update, just kind of referring back to the fact that we have historic increases in funding for the state school aid fund and for the overall state budget. The May Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference came back. That's what the, the House and the Senate, the Governor's Office were all waiting for that before they would begin their negotiations around the final budget, the consensus budget. That was up 1.2 million for the state school aid fund, another nearly million for the general fund for more than $2.1 billion above projections. And the previous projections came in about $2.5 billion above. So there's a lot of money on the table for negotiations. What we're hearing behind the scenes, the Governor, the House and the Senate, they are beginning to have their conversations. The Governor has indicated that she's willing to tackle some temporary tax relief. This is something that the Republicans are pushing for, some income tax reduction and other forms of tax relief. It looks like the Governor's willing to do some temporary tax relief, and I'll get to that a little bit further. But what we're hearing about the state school aid fund is that you should expect heavy emphasis on the school aid per, fund itself, the per-people foundation allowance, special education categorical and the state retirement system. So there's a lot of talk, we have, this is, a lot of this is one-time money. A fair amount of it's tied to the fact that inflation is so high. That means it's cost that much more to purchase goods. That means we're collecting that much more sales tax on everything for the state sales tax as well as the gas tax, which is also subject to state sales tax. And remember, two, two cents of that six cents per dollar goes to fund the state school aid fund. So it gives you an idea of the percent that's going into the school aid fund. We got some news regarding the Let MI Kids Learn ballot initiative. This was essentially a school voucher initiative that would have provided tax credits for private schools. They announced this, that last week, that they would not have enough signatures to get it on the ballot. That, and, and they are still collecting signatures though, but it becomes exponentially more difficult because every day past the 180-day window, they lose the first day of the signatures from day one, then from day two, then from day three. So if you look at what happened in the gubernatorial race this week, another historic situation where multiple candidates were kicked off the ballot because they did not have valid signatures. There was a lot of fraud. And that was with just collecting 15,000 signatures. For a state ballot proposal, you need 340,000. And actually, to really pass the smell test and to ensure you've got enough clean signatures, the goal is typically 500,000. So what, they're continuing their signature campaign in hopes the legislature, that they'll get enough signatures so the legislature can simply take action to adopt this, this law. But again, based on what we're seeing with other signature gathering, this is an uphill battle. Good news, working after retirement legislation. As you know, one of your top priorities is, is looking at addressing the talent issues, one of which was around critical shortage and the need, the ability for us to bring back retirees as soon as possible and to ensure that it's not negatively impacting their retirement or the state retirement system. There was significant progress made on this that would stream, significantly streamline our, our retirement laws. It is, it was expected to be approved by the Senate. A few senators kind of balked a little bit, but we still feel confident this is going to get some movement. The way it's written, individuals who have not yet retired would still have to sit out, but only nine months, not an entire year. And once they've done that, once they've done that, a retiree can come back any position, any duration, at any level of compensation for all positions. So this is, this is better than the critical shortage list. This gives us maximum flexibility. It would protect the current retirees. Current retirees can start effective immediately. They don't have to, to sit out any longer. That this, if they've already retired, they've already met that window, they're able to begin working for the district. Again, any position, any duration, any compensation. And the district will no longer be required to pay the 20.96% surcharge on retiree wages. That's what's proposed. There's some speculation that this is where some of that deal with MIPSers comes in, that they may be able to apply some funding of this surplus right now to cover that. So that's good news. That was set to pass Senate two weeks ago. Right now, the focus has shifted to the budgets, but heavy emphasis is on getting this done before the new school year. The suspension of the gas tax and sales tax on fuel, the Senate passed legislation to suspend the Michigan gas tax and the sales tax on fuel from June 15th to September 15th. The governor, that would cost this, the general fund 193 million and the state school aid fund 266 million. So we're not overly enthusiastic about this. This is temporary relief, but this is also political season. And what the governor has said publicly is she's open to it. She wants to work to reach an agreement on this before the end of June. Hers would like this, the final proposal, she was proposing a $500 rebate check, potential suspension of the gas tax, expansion of the earned income tax credit, or some other tax relief proposal. So you're kind of getting a taste. Republicans want to do the income tax reduction, gas tax, sales tax on gas relief. The governor's talking about similar things, but with rebate, earned income tax credit. You can see a deal in the making, and we anticipate seeing something pretty, pretty soon on this. The tutoring proposals, that's another thing. Obviously, literacy has been a top priority there. The governor has a proposal she announced for $280 million, targeting $200 per pupil to get MI Kids back on track. The House and the Senate have their own respective tutoring proposals. And this is still going through the washing machine, but we are going to see something for tutoring, whether it's certain vendors, it could be a combination of certain vendors are selected statewide that could be used by districts. Districts could receive anywhere from $200 per pupil up to $1,500 per pupil, based on a formula on free and reduced lunch, but that, that was amended in the Senate side. So it's kind of going back and forth. I'm not going to get into all the sausage making, just know that that, there's movement there. And that's all I have on legislative.
Mr. Helmuth, the tutoring thing would not start this summer, the following summer? Or would it be all, all school year?
This is for next school year. So in theory, I mean, July, you know, this is, again, assumes that the state passes their budget and, and we're, we're, we know what that budget is before our own budget kicks in July 1st. The legislate, their fiscal year is October to September. So, but we're optimistic that they'll have school aid done before July 1st. But again, it is, it is targeted for next school year. That's what we're talking
But when you say tutoring is going to be done in their buildings?
Not, that's to be determined. It could be online. It could include some in-person in-building based on, potentially based on needs of students. But they're all over the board. It ranges from giving the schools the funding for us to hire the tutors, to hiring a entity that does, is known nationally and is in 16 different states, doing online tutoring for students that are with real live online tutors, but who may not be physically located even in Michigan. That's part of the trick right now is we have a lot of federal S R funds, but we struggle to hire the tutors because just like every other position around here, we can't find the people to fill the positions.
Mr. Helmuth, I have a quick question. Going back to the signatures with the ballot proposal for the private school tax breaks, you mentioned the hope is to get enough signatures for a legislature to take action. That's not, are you suggesting that with enough signatures it wouldn't have to go to ballot? Or can you unpack that a little bit?
It gets a little complicated. I may need to brush up a little bit, but what, what it would do is if they get the signatures, the legislature first has the opportunity to act on it themselves. Okay. But if they choose not to act, then it will automatically go to the ballot. So it's, it's, it starts with, we've got, we're essentially petitioning the legislature saying, you should act on this, since the governor vetoed it. And the legislature could vote to put it into law, or they can not act and it goes to the ballot.
But they still need all of those signatures?
That's correct.
And it seems less likely if they're losing the early ones.
That's right. They didn't have enough, I mean, if they even had a remote number of signatures to get it on, we might have seen something a little that says, hey, we're close. But we haven't seen that. We said they're going to continue to collect signatures with the hopes that they'll get enough in time to bring, at least take it to the legislature so the legislature can put it, that they can vote up or down on it.
Thank you. Strategic plan.
All right. I think I'm shifting here. Julie, is there anything I need to do here other than unmute? Great. So, yeah, this is a long time coming. I'm really pleased to be here to announce the, the final document of our 2022, 2027 strategic plan. Going to, this document, along with a poster and a two-page, simple, kind of one-pager, if you will, back-to-back, will be circulated throughout the schools, to our scholars, to staff, to families, to the general public. It'll be on the dedicated webpage. And then as Dr. Roby had shared, we are looking this fall to do a really kind of a dog and pony show, take it out to the community, share the final product, and, and also in how it relates to what are the actions and initiatives that we're really tackling in year one, one of which I know Jen mentioned, or excuse me, Ms. Shock, you mentioned the, the facilities master plan that addresses some financial sustainability issues, workforce and talent retention recruitment issues. And so we see the potential to be doing both at the same time. So I'm going to move through this. I'm going to move kind of quick because a lot of this is repetitive. You've seen this multiple times since last year, but you just, just the introduction to it, just remember, you know, this, this is one of the, the strategic plans that was done in the middle of a global pandemic. And it absolutely impacted the timeline, it impacted our ability to connect with the stakeholders. Yeah, I think when you, when we go through it, we're really proud of how we partnered with our friends through the Community Foundation, the Urban Core Collective, to do the authentic intentional stakeholder engagement, to do both in-person, online focus groups, surveys, large community meetings, I mean, really try, and then meeting with all the different stakeholders. As you might recall, phase one, this kicked off in April, and it was an analysis phase. This is where we first folk, had 250 different individuals who participated in different stakeholder focus groups, ranging from students, staff, families, partners, higher ed, business leaders, all of those who are listed there. We also did a community-wide survey that had more than 1,300 individuals that participated. As with all strategic planning, we really wanted to focus what, first on the strengths and assets, what's working. Here, you've seen some notable incremental gains around our third grade math and, and English language arts. One of the biggest, most notable strengths was our significant increase in our graduation rates. And that was true across the board for all students, all, all, all groups of students. The other part of the community, as part of the survey, that reflected the real positive connection between students and teachers, our grad rates, again, which is very well-known in this community based on the respondents, dedicated and supportive employees, and the variety of programs and services. We always talk about our portfolio of choices. We have a lot of different programs and services to offer. Our community partnerships, theme schools, diversity was, those were all ranked in that survey among some of the top strengths of the district. You'll see some of the focus groups, the verbal feedback was around the district teachers and staff as caring. Grand Rapids is a community with a strong sense of pride. There's a lot of pride in GRPS. The, the general academics are viewed positively overall. The wide variety of choices, the portfolio, parent engagement, GRPS University, these were all identified as some of those strengths. But of course, with everything, there's opportunities to enhance GRPS as well. Our overall academic performance in fifth and eighth grade for math and ELA is below the state average and has been flat to, pretty, pretty flat over time. You also saw a big disparity between the different groups of students. And obviously, that's, that we have an equity issue there in our academics. We also have an equity issue with disparities among our exclusionary discipline practices. As we thought about the school uniforms, there was another example of something where students are getting put out and excluded from school for not wearing a, a uniform. And, and you saw that disproportion or the disparity in that data as well. Here's the data, then this is why one of the priority outcomes is focused on this, is that while our African-American students represent 32% of our overall student population, they represent 55% of students who are, are receiving disciplinary action, expelled or suspended. This shows that we're, this one shows that we're really below the, the national average, pretty significantly below the, the national average on those students who are enrolling in colleges of education in, in two or four a year. They also, it showed some different areas where we, we have to look at the, the two-tier system and the, the kind of inequity between neighborhood schools and theme schools. While we have a lot of these options available, this is something that is, is an area of, of growth and opportunity. Huge one was employee impact. The focus groups really talked a lot about our need to, to have a comprehensive talent retention recruitment and development plan. We've seen that exacerbated more this year with, you know, at one point, we had more than 300 vacancies out of 2,000 in positions. So if you do the math, and another part was focusing in on diversifying our, our workforce. You know, our, our student, you can see our student population is, is very diverse, whereas our teaching population is 89% Caucasian. Now, that is not just a GRPS problem. That is across the board with colleges of education, at a time when Michigan colleges of education have seen a historic decline in the number of students completing colleges of education, a 71% decline since 2006. So not only have we seen a historic decline, you've also seen a historic, or a relatively small percentage of, of students of color enrolling in colleges of education. So it's a double whammy, and Michigan ranks dead last in the country for the number of kids completing colleges of education. So we've got triple whammy. This is where we had a chance to really work, oh, this, our, we heard a lot from our community stakeholders that GRPS has a lot of partners, but that we need to do a stronger, better job, you know, building and maintaining trust in welcoming and, and enhancing our partnerships, really bringing, making that our partners more, feel more welcomed, more focused, and that the district's being more responsive. As part of this, we were developing with the board and with the leadership equity vision for the board and for the, the district. So we have embedded the equity vision statement right here in the strategic plan. The strategy development process, following that, that analysis phase, is when we did that, that half-day design session with more than 100 stakeholders that came in. And through that, that, they'd kind of helped develop the framework, which led to the priority outcomes, what are the six priority outcomes that we're focused on, what, and what are the main, what are the, the strategies and what are the objectives? So our strategic plan, the priority student outcomes is increase literacy proficiency, increase math proficiency, reduce academic disparities for our Black and Latino students. And this is very important that we needed to call this out and focus on, like a laser beam. While this is for all kids, this is a particular focus area for our Black and Latino students. Another one that's similar was reducing Black student exclusionary discipline. The data is clear, so we need to be focused like a laser beam specifically on reducing those disparities with our Black students, but for all students as well. Increasing student empowerment, belonging and agency. You heard the decision tonight from our superintendent, you know, that survey that was done about school uniforms, the staff and the parents were pretty mixed. It was almost 50/50, but the students were overwhelming. It wasn't even close. And so if we're going to hold true to what we said would be the priority outcome in our strategic plan, listening to student voice, uplifting, empowering, and taking action with, based on that. So you saw, your strategic plan is in action today, tonight. And then, of course, increasing successful transitions from high school to college. And I want to emphasize some of what you're starting to see here is what's on the posters and on the one-pagers that are a little bit easier to read. But here you'll see strategic themes, meeting the holistic student needs, with the increased student engagement, empowering families, and expanding direct supports. You've got optimize and value all school options. This is really going after that two-tier system. How do we uplift our neighborhood schools? How do we celebrate and ensure that all schools are valued? Another objective is ensuring equitable access and outcomes, and this is creating equitable systems to distribute resources to schools based on student needs. This is also looking at incorporating anti-racist inclusionary practices that advance student participation in programs and opportunities. The next one is enhance curriculum and program opportunities. That's to ensure all students experience an aligned, culturally responsive curriculum at, at or above grade level, ensuring curriculum and academic programs aligned with college and career readiness, and the expanding the applied hands-on learning opportunities. We heard that really, the students want to see more of that. And then, lastly, the cultivate and engage impactful, more diverse workforce, increase effectiveness of the hiring process with emphasis on diversity, create a culture that demonstrates value of all employees and establish employee roles and competencies for effective district programs and services. And lastly, create a culture of trust, collaboration, and stewardship. Ensure open, responsive, transparent practices, enhance partnerships aligned to community and student success, and ensure financial sustainability. So you've kind of heard a little bit of what, how these, the, the priority outcomes, the strategies and the objectives, kind of aligned with what we heard from those stakeholders in both the strength and, and the growth areas. Implementation now, as you might recall, we had an internal team, along with some external stakeholders, developed initiative action plans under each one of these, targeted for year one. This work will now transition to, with Dr. Tammy Campbell, and we will further be refining those work plans so that they are more bite-sized, manageable. I think we had some real ambitious approach. We had 16 different initiatives. We have 16 different initiative action plans. There are actually 12 because we were able to consolidate a few. But now, our work over the summer is kind of bring that even further refined, and then to really begin to roll it out and, and take action, some of which you've heard we're already taking action on tonight.
One of the things that we are also doing related to that is being very intentional because a lot of times when you see a strategic plan, it's kind of polished up and you don't always see the connection to what the actual work is. And so as we are moving forward, one of our kind of directives that I have given our team is how does this fit into the strategic plan? So we really want this to be a living, breathing document as new ideas come forward and innovation and creativity comes forward. We want to make sure that we can tie it to the things that we say have, that our community has said is important. And if not, then it might be, I'm sorry, not now. Or please help us kind of make that connection because oftentimes, as people have ideas and, you know, and we want to encourage creativity, but we also want to make sure that we are being intentional about, are we getting to the goals that we have for? And if you notice also, this is 22 through 27. And so most strategic plans, quite honestly, are about five years before they start to kind of lose their, their luster. It does not mean that this is everything that we're saying that will happen between 22 and 27. I think it's really important that any strategic plan for it to be adaptable to current conditions. And so some of the things that we are doing as we move forward is as we outline, what are the, the bite-sized pieces that we've talked about, you know, over the next school year? What are those things that we're going to lift up for the 22, 23 school year, and what will be on deck for 23, 24? And then always kind of keeping that, that cycle real iterative of looking at our current And then always kind of keeping that, that cycle real iterative of looking at our current conditions, because it's hard to predict. You know, we, we have an idea of what, you know, the next couple of years are, but as you move further out, similar to like when you predict the weather, or when they predict the weather, because I don't predict the weather. But, you know, the further out, when you do that forecast, it gets a little bit murkier, and it's, it's harder to kind of tell. So we want to make sure that we are constantly coming back to what these outcomes are around meeting students' holistic needs, equitable access, making sure that all of our schools are a valued option, enhancing curricular programs, engage impactful workforce, and creating a trust of collaboration and stewardship. How that looks may change, but these outcomes should not change. And then finally, I'll say along with this is, each school will be able to pick two or three goals that they specifically want to have that are aligned with this, because we look at it, how do, how are we tightened loose? Because we have a district plan, but then each school individually, with their leadership team and their community, know what specific things they want to kind of drill into to help uplift those, and making sure that they communicate that with their community around, these are the items that we've identified for our school that are important. It doesn't mean that those other things are not, but the things that they're going to focus in on, because again, it's about making it actionable and manageable. And it really is important that we don't just have this really pretty plan that doesn't have any real outcomes attached to it.
Thank you.
Mr. Helmo, may I ask you to put your legislative hat back on again?
Sure.
It's my understanding that the legislature did not extend the third-grade retention?
That's correct. It's third grade, they were, we were not successful in getting either a temporary suspension or an extension. So the third-grade retreating law is in effect.
So do we have any kind of an idea about how many kids might be retained?
We do, and we've already sent out communications. I'm not sure if I, it was about 100 letters, I think, that went out. I have to double-check that.
I'm looking at Dr. Gorman.
It's comparable number to last year. Slightly above, because every scholar tested, where every scholar did not test last year, and those communications have already gone out to families.
And so, to kind of, kind of reiterate what we did last year for families and those who are listening, is that we, we do not believe in punishing children for political, we, we just don't believe in that. And so, as we are in a pandemic, and there are lots of things that have happened over the course of this school year, we want to make sure that our scholars are successful. And so our building principals and leaders have been instructed to reach out to those identified scholars to let them know that if they would like their child to be moved forward, what that process is, so that we can make sure that we support them along the way. And if they decide that they would like their child to be retained, to have a conversation about what that could possibly look like as well.
And that's what was put in the, so we got our communication out to them before the state, because they were, they all got a little kind of scary letter from the MDE, and we got ours in front of theirs to say, here's what's coming, and here's what you could do about it.
Okay. So the 100 letters that went out, that were just the 100 letters that went to third-grade kids, or?
Those were to the, the students who have been identified as essentially being likely to retain under the law, so.
So those are all kids that were?
It was only those who, who, after you take all the exclusions, exceptions, all, all the things that, you might recall, there were a lot of exceptions in the law that would prevent an automatic retention. These are the students who are under threat of automatic retention only.
I imagine that the answer is yes with respect to, are we targeting these students with our summer interventions?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I appreciate the, kind of the proactiveness that our district is taking. You're communicating with parents, you're giving them options. You know, you're, you're really letting them see, okay, how can I continue to move my kid forward with these options of summer school or, or things like that? So I really appreciate that. It's a tough choice.
Thank you, Mr. Helmo. Looks like maybe we have the Larry Oberst show. We have several action items, Mr. Oberst.
Let me know how much of a show you want.
All right. Good evening, President Ross, Superintendent Dr. Robey, and board members. Yeah, a number of action items that all fall into the finance arena. The first one being the reopen, a financial reopen for a parapro group. That is, those are one non-MEA union, they're separate unions. So you met with them, and as your notes in your packet indicated, agreed to a compensation increase that ranged from 11%, at the low highest step, to about 14, 15% at the lowest. That gets all of our parapros to a minimum wage amount of 16, 15,000. That's the area. That's still very competitive, still a shortage really nationally in parapros. So we need to do that to get the actual wage retained now. And kind of keep with our favorite districts. They have ratified, they also, I will mention, they are looking at changing their insurance coverage. We're at the hard cap.
Excuse me, Larry, do you mind getting a mic?
Good idea, thank you, Reverend Mathias. We also agreed to increase hard cap to the, the new hard cap levels beginning January 1st. However, they are looking, in fact, they met today with the West Michigan Health Insurance Pool that, where their health insurance comes from, looking at a potentially less costly insurance plan. We are limited our cost to the hard cap, so frankly, we don't, you know, we don't really care what, what insurance plan they decide on. So let me make a decision on that, which won't impact the compensation agreement that we have with them currently. So tonight, we need you as a board to ratify the contracts, we can move forward. Those will be effective on July 1st, those new compensation rates.
May I ask you a question that really?
Sure.
The parapros, I know so many of these folks are so well-educated and talented. Are we making any effort at all to encourage these people to go on and, and get their teaching certifications?
Yes, we, we, we have, and we will continue to do that. We've had, we've had several, since I've been here, that have gone on and, and become teachers. And, and the ones I'm aware of actually became special ed teachers too, which is a high need issue, you know. So yes.
And is there, are there, is there a special thing now to parapros, not just sort of a general thing?
Yes, there are, we have a couple partnerships. We, I think we shared about the Davenport partnership, which specifically is working with working adults to help get their degrees. And, and then also, we've talked about and looked at how to ensure, to kind of fast-track it, because the district at one point paid for a certain amount of credit hours, and we've increased that credit hours per year, because the timeframe that it would take is extremely stretched out. And so we want to accelerate that, because we know that this is an issue. And we have tried, again, to motivate and to figure out different ways to help support, to increase our workforce, because I think that's a value, value add for our organization.
Thank you.
Question on, you stated, Mr. Oberst, that it was an increase, an average increase of 11% to 14%. But the document you provided us says 14% to 18%.
Sorry, 14% to 18%, that's a correct number, 18%. I didn't have it in front of me when I mentioned that, so yeah.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the GRPS Parapro Association Wage Reopen?
So, support.
All right, Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused, Ms. Davis is excused, Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Ross?
And unless there were any questions for the purchasing agenda, purchasing agenda addendum, well, I'll just ask for a motion for the purchasing agenda.
Let me just mention, President Ross, if you don't mind, that, yeah, the addendum is, the purchasing agenda, the Finance Committee approved, and since that meeting, we had a couple items that came up that needed to be approved now, as opposed to wait until next finance. One being that MCEA membership dues, that's actually our insurance premium for the Middle Cities Risk Management Trust, that's all of our general liability. Billing insurance comes through that, it's due on July 1st. And then, the final piece, if you will, of the major bid package is renovation central, $488,500 for some asbestos remediation needs to take place for that major renovation we've been involved with, so.
Right. So may I have a motion for the purchasing agenda, please?
So moved. Support. All right, Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused, Ms. Davis is excused, Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. And a motion for the purchasing agenda addendum?
So moved.
Support.
All right, Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker, excuse, Ms. Davis, excuse, Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. All right, so Mr. Oberst, do you want to provide any background on the?
Yeah, just, just quickly, again, we spent a lot of time on the amendments to the Finance Committee. Just, the special revenue, again, there's three amendments here as required by law. You'll need to act on each one of them individually. Special revenue now is primarily our food service program, which is financed with federal dollars. The amendment two here is really to conform that to the meal served and the additional costs and revenue as our meal count went up as compared to the prior, when we were only in, in session for maybe half the year. The debt retirement or debt service fund, that's the fund that accumulates the property tax revenue to pay off our bonded debt. And again, every year, we just conform that to the actual tax dollars being collected based on the updated taxable values. There's a very small adjustment to amendment, for amendment two on the debt retirement fund. Then the big general fund, our major operating fund, again, overall, I'll just, I've gotten the screen here. You can see the impact on our fund balances, to use about almost $6.5 million of our fund balance that will get us to a projected fund balance. Let me just throw that up. Here's a summary that you've seen before, the very far right column, you can see that's a projected fund balance when we end out the current year, at about 13.8 million, or about 9.4% of our, of unrestricted revenue. That's really close to the 10% goal that we have. We tried to be conservative in our amendments. The general fund, and there's some, a couple of large numbers here, but just quickly, the general operations, that's the only column that has an impact on our fund balance. The grant column does not. A lot of the big numbers in the grants column, that's to reflect spending the SIR dollars, title dollars. And we did get a new federal grant after Amendment One was prepared. And that's that Emergency Connectivity Fund, which we can use to, to purchase student devices, as well as provide connectivity. New grant dollars, we have to, our grant expenditures need to equal grant dollars. So that's what the zero impact, so many of the expenditure adjustments in the grant column relate to the refinement of the revenue numbers. Some of that, I remind you, the federal fiscal year runs October 1st through September. Our fiscal year ends on June 30th. So many of those grant, those federal grant dollar adjustments are to reflect what we think we're going to spend by the end of our fiscal year, even though we'll have three more months to spend it before they expire, or part of it's carried over. We really never expires, we either carry it over or spend it. So that's what those adjustments look like. As I mentioned, the impact on fund balance still gets us within the, the goal of the, of our board policy. So that's really all I want to say, but I'll certainly, Andy questions, yeah.
I see that the, could you put that back up again, please?
Yeah.
I see that the Grand Rapids Public Foundation there, and their grants to us. Now, do they give us all the money that they raise through donations and that sort of thing? And then we decide how to spend it, or do they run their own programs too?
They're, they're, the foundation, we get, we get really two major buckets of money. One is to, is to fund our elementary, middle school sports, great sports program, if you will. The other is, yeah, like the mine share last week, those dollars they raised there. There are certain identified, and we, and we work with them jointly, obviously, in terms of what our needs are. There are certainly identified needs that relates to science and math and fine arts that have been consistent throughout the number of years. So those, those dollars are generally granted to us first, when we meet with them for specific needs. That'll probably happen to be in the next academic year.
So any money that they raised the other night, or that they get on a regular basis?
Yeah.
That all comes in one or two buckets?
Yeah, again, there's, some of the money, some of the donations they get may be identified for a specific purpose. We have to honor that specific purpose. But any unrestricted, like the mine shares, all unrestricted, the vast majority is unrestricted dollars. That's when we meet with the foundation leadership and our leadership and determine where we can spend those dollars, where we want to spend those dollars. Part of it obviously funds our operations too.
Thank you.
All right, can I get a, a motion to approve the adoption of Budget Amendment Two, reference to general fund?
So moved.
Support. Support.
All right, Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker, excuse, Ms. Davis is excused, Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. And is there a motion for the adoption of Budget Amendment Two regarding the special revenue fund?
So moved.
Support.
All right, Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker and Ms. Davis are excused, Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Ross?
Yes. And then a, a motion for the adoption of Budget Amendment Two regarding the debt retirement fund?
I didn't get that, what did?
The debt retirement, Budget Amendment Two, reference to debt retirement fund, motion?
Okay, so we, yes, I will.
Thank you.
All right, Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker and Ms. Davis are excused, Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
And President Ross?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, brings us to our consent agenda grouping. Anyone want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda grouping for tonight?
So moved.
Support.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Baker and Davis are excused, Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes, Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
And President Ross?
Yes. Okay, this brings us to public comment for non-agenda items. We do have a, a few. Just a reminder that we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. We'll call you down roughly three at a time. You can just come have a seat in the front row. And we will start with Ms. Sarah Chanter, Salin Tron, and Francesca Beningo. You can come down, please. Could you state your name before you get started, please? And again, reminded that we have three minutes for your comment.
Are you, are we waiting for a timer, or am I?
Oh, yes, go ahead, sorry. I was just, I was just setting the timer.
Oh, you're good. Good evening, my name is Salin Tron, and I am about to finish up my first year of teaching at Grand Rapids Montessori High, and I teach mathematics 9 through 12. I wanted to first thank you for your time and dedication to this district. Last time I came, I spoke to you all about Grand Rapids Montessori being placed in a building of its own. I appreciate you hearing us and taking that to heart.
While it's not possible for us to be moved by the fall, I'm here to ask you and support, ask you for your support in keeping all of the teachers from Grand Rapids Montessori High on the same floor. I want to recognize that many in this district have worked hard to minimize the disruption of school while doing renovations in the Innovation Central and Grand Rapids Montessori Building. With the current plan during renovation, Grand Rapids Montessori High is being split up into three different floors, the ground floor, the first floor, and the second floor. Montessori is based on community, its soul is in community. By splitting us up between three different floors, we lose the soul of our school. Our students lose the community of each other by being, of each other being physically around them. We have been told that splitting up cannot be changed for the first semester of the upcoming school year, but have not been giving, given a reason why, us teachers, I mean, and students. At the end of the day, I want an answer for my students when they ask me why it is this way, why it seems that Montessori is being disturbed so much more than Innovation Central, why we can't just be with each other. So I ask again for your support in keeping the Montessori High teachers on the same floor, and if not, a reason for why that is not possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want her to go?
Okay. I want to start by saying thank you all for hearing us and considering.
Your name?
Oh, I was gonna.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, my apologies.
Yeah, thank you for hearing us and considering what we have to say. My name is Francesca Beningo, I'm in my third year of teaching science at Grand Rapids Montessori High School. And as Salen has just communicated, our building is under construction, and the proposed plan is that we are split between three floors. What I have to say is that in a building with four floors and most of the space dedicated to Innovation Central High School, I need, I'm finding it difficult to understand why, when we only have 11 teachers, we are being split up. Originally, we were all supposed to move to the first floor and be located within the same hallway. Somehow, between this information being shared and now, this has changed. While I understand that many of us will be moving and have to accommodate for the construction, splitting up our staff and students is an avoidable situation that would cause numerous issues for us as a program. First and foremost is safety. If we were all together, our efforts to keep a safe and secure space would only need to be directed toward one hallway and to our own students. Split us up and what could have been a strong and meaningful effort towards safe and secure is now compromised by monitoring students from Innovation Central and the fact that we have a third of the amount of staffing on each hallway, in each hallway. Even though other teachers will be there, they do not have the relationship and trust with our students that we do and cannot have the same impact or understanding that we would when handling situations. In addition to the security risks this poses, if we are split up, our program and community will inevitably suffer. It is not easy to be a school within a school. We do not have community spaces, we have staff working in closets, we consistently face issues with students who are not Montessori, there are consistent interruptions, we cannot have our own schedule. I could go on, but in spite of all of this, our program continues to flourish. However, we have reached a tipping point. If we continue to improve the resources and spaces we offer our students and community, we will grow and thrive. On the other hand, if we are split up, we will see our numbers drop, discontentment and resentment among staff, and an overall decline in the sense of community as we struggle to be one when we cannot be together. The Montessori method took over 40 years to develop and refine. It has proven effective in numerous and varied communities and offers opportunities for equity which our district so pointedly strives for. Our population is one of the most representative of the city of Grand Rapids, we have close to 100% graduation rate, and have since seen students move on into careers in tech, healthcare, and more. So if something cannot be done, or will not be done to deter us from splitting up, again, I ask, why is our program deemed unworthy of space and togetherness?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Chanter, a student at GR Montessori. I want to say a few things that might be easier to understand. If I take a petal from a flower and rip it up, will it still be a petal on a beautiful flower? If our school was split up and it would not be a school, just like the petal would not be on a beautiful flower anymore. My school has been a really great place of learning experiences, and it would help that teachers, and it helps that teachers are understanding and want to help everyone. So that's why you don't want to split up. That's my little thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up. Next up, we have Maggie Zick, Jacqueline, I apologize, Alan Pitch, close enough, maybe, I'm sorry, and Liam McDermott.
Hi, my name is Maggie Zick. I'm here to proclaim some frustrations, complaints, if you will. It's been said that if we come up here to speak and have complaints, then we better have solutions. I'm expected to have solutions to my grievances, yet I hardly see the actual paid employees who are allegedly here to make changes actually doing that. While I am not on the payroll of the GRPS system, I still have some solutions. Problem: Shooting near the schools. Solution: Code yellow always, even if it's overly cautious. My kid was allowed to exit the building to take recycling out during the whole shooting debacle that happened near our school recently. The teachers had no idea what was going on until the event was basically being wrapped up. Problem: It's an issue that teachers feel uncomfortable speaking here or to central office staff members. Solution: Stop being intimidating and threatening them anytime they have an issue they'd like to simply address. Also, get to know the teachers. There are teachers who have worked here 20 years who have never had a conversation with their executive director. Problem: Teachers do not feel safe or supported. Solution: Eliminate the hostile work environment. Stop telling them to follow the chain of command and then always getting a no for every answer they need. Hire ups like yourself, Dr. Roby, never even hear about their problems because certain central office admin won't even work with the teachers to solve the issues. The issues typically die with the executive directors and the issue still exists. Problem: Central office seems very disconnected from the schools and their staff as well as the needs of scholars. Solution: Central office admin needs to spend more time in the schools, interacting like true educators who care, maybe even do some subbing once in a while. Problem: Curriculum being purchased by executive directors who don't understand specialty programs and do not consider teacher input. Solution: Just listen to what the teachers say is needed the first time so that more money isn't wasted paying teachers to fix the inadequate curriculum. It's confusing to me that teachers are qualified to create curriculum, but they aren't qualified to suggest what will work best from already existing curriculum. Problem: The CO2 sensors are detecting higher amounts than deemed safe within some of our classrooms. It's been said that the sensors are broken and alarms will be put in their place. Solution: Replace the sensors so that the levels can be monitored appropriately. Don't replace it with a carbon monoxide alarm instead, which was done. How does that help with monitoring carbon dioxide levels? Listen, I pay attention, close attention, and I ask a lot of questions. In fact, I seem to ask a lot of hard questions because a lot of the answers I get are typically excuses as to why certain things are done a certain way regardless of logic. The default excuse typically has to do with money or the talent shortage. It seems to me that we have the most money that our district will ever have thanks to Essor, so I don't see how money is an excuse anymore. As far as the talent shortage goes, get creative or pay people what they're worth. I'm still not sure why I'm supposed to have solutions when I come up here, but my questions can be met with excuses. I realize that I'm not always going to get the answer that I would like, but it sure seems like I never get the answer that seems best for the students, teachers, and our families. If something doesn't sound right or look right, I urge all of you to ask questions as well.
Thank you.
I am Jacqueline Olimpich, and I am reading this on behalf of Brett Graham, who was not able to be here tonight. Good evening, President Ross, Dr. Roby, and Board. I would like to share some serious concerns I have experienced over and over throughout the year. I am revisiting a school safety issue that I first brought to our executive directors. Recently, we experienced an active shooting scenario in the neighborhood close to our elementary and middle high. I'm sure we are all well aware of the senseless violence going on across the country and more specifically in our own local community. School safety must be paramount. I reached out to our directors inquiring what the safety protocols are for our children and was quickly dismissed. I understand the desire to prevent undue panic, however, I did not receive a single piece of information answering my question of what is protocol for my child's safety at school. I was informed a risk assessment was done and we were in the clear. However, as I have had more time pass and conversations take place, I learned we had a physical police presence on our property and within eyesight of school, a SWAT team present. If this is not good enough, to consider closing classroom doors and temporarily preventing anyone from entering or exiting the building, I hate to hear what it takes to lock doors. Where is the communication from the leaders letting us know that our children, not scholars, are safe? Where is the communication letting us know that they are taking the school shooting seriously? Texas should be a massive eye-opener, and yet nothing. The issue is obviously greater than what I can express this evening, so I will move on. I do not enjoy coming here with complaints and issues, as I am sure no one wants me to voice these issues. However, I have been continually dismissed on many of my concerns and conversation points surrounding our school. Rarely do I receive full, complete answers and responses to my questions. Rather, I am redirected, dismissed, ignored, and shushed. I have genuine concern for the perceived lack of attention for Southwest along with many other GRPS schools. There are numerous issues district-wide that have been left for tomorrow. Words, committees, meetings, promises, and leadership can only go so far. Action is going to be the loudest, most credible voice. We need to see the leadership start leading by action and not word. Our playground has been three years in the making and still limping to design completion at the end of the school year. We had water concerns that fortunately were fixed. We have air quality issues in the building that received proposed solutions of installing an alarm so teachers would know when it is too harmful to sit in the class. Rather than fix, we dismiss and/or appease. HVAC concerns are still an issue. No clear answers have been issued on any of those matters. Ensuring maintenance happens could prevent some of these problems. The school year is coming to a close, funds are available and being requested to push out use. Reconsider and fix the issues present in the district today. We have many more issues needing attention beyond the ones mentioned. Tomorrow does not show up for GRPS, and waiting until tomorrow should no longer be a valid option.
Thank you.
Hello, Board. My name is Liam McDermott, and I am a student at GR Montessori. The future of GR Montessori rests on getting our building. I do not say this lightly. Our community and way of teaching is threatened. Two years of not having a shred of identity, a simple afterthought to those who reside in the Innovation Building. I pushed for the school of Grand Rapids Montessori Middle and High to get its own building for the betterment of students, of faculty, and Montessori as a whole. As James Earl Jones once said, "If you build it, they will come." Thank you.
Thank you. And Elizabeth, apologize, Elizabeth, your handwriting is almost as bad as mine. Elizabeth H. Horse?
Hoon Horse.
Hoon Horse, I'm sorry, thank you. And again, welcome to the, my bad writing club. Men, Dr. Tricks, I hope you take my humor appropriately.
Can I share a document with everyone?
Sure, just pass the document, pass it down to us. Thank you for accepting my Tim Daniel.
It's okay. Would you like to go first or me? It's up to you. Go ahead. Okay. My name is, good evening, Board, my name is Elizabeth Hoon Horse, and I am a former educator and guest teacher in the GRPS public schools. I do guest teach all grades and all schools. The reason why I'm here today is because I'm here to discuss what I have observed in this district. First and foremost, I kind of wanted to peel it back a little bit, I have lived downtown for 15 years. When I first came down into the city, and I've been raised in Grand, I was raised in Wyoming, lived downtown for 15 years in Grand Rapids. 15 years ago, you couldn't pay me to put my kids through this district. And I think a lot of us have been here long enough to know why that was. And then Ms. Neal, when she came in as the superintendent, breathed a new life into this district. I saw commitments being followed, I saw different kinds of schools coming in, and I saw action being taken. However, with my guest teaching, I have noticed, and it was actually brought up with that strategic plan, that the theme schools versus the neighborhood schools, it's stark, to say the least. The neighborhood schools reminds me of the GRPS of the old, the one that you would never send your kids to. And the neighborhood, the theme schools are the ones that we tout and are incredibly proud of. I have noticed a theme throughout all grades and from, all the way from kindergarten up to seniors that I would like to address, and it's actually interesting, that strategic plan, I'm glad I came here tonight and able to see that, because it looks like there's, these are themes that you guys are already going to be addressing. But I kind of want to bring this up even further. Two things I have noticed massively throughout all the grades: behavioral issues and literacy rates. For example, last week, I taught at campus elementary for three days. Four of the students in my fourth grade class were illiterate, not a little bit illiterate, a lot. Like, could barely spell their name. So the reason why I bring this up, the both issues is, A, the behavioral issues. It's everything, not being able to sit, not being able to be quiet, not being able to listen. In the neighborhood schools, I spend about 90% of my day disciplining, 10% educating. What I mean disciplining is, usually, it's mostly like, okay, let's try to wrap it up, guys, let's try to be quiet, but it's nonstop, all the time. Imagine having somebody screaming in your ear at retail, like you see those people in retail that are screaming at the poor girl at the desk and just losing their mind. Imagine that's eight hours straight. That's what I have in the classroom. I have some solutions for some of the behavioral issues that I saw. I have one of the things I like to tell my students, because they like to fight with each other, that's pretty much the biggest thing. I said you have to say three things nice first before you could say one thing mean. I had to have an example of that in school the other day. It took 10 minutes for two students to say three things nice about each other. It takes them less than a split second to punch each other. This is a common theme throughout all the grades in the neighborhood schools. Some of the other issues that I saw, the Chromebooks, which I love and I'm a huge advocate for, we need to find ways to block them further so they cannot get to the content that they're getting on that they should not be getting on. It was incredibly disruptive in the class. Also, the cell phone rule, I know that that's an issue. I know that they're trying to work on it, especially at the high school level, but again, it's out of control. I also had students hook up a controller and play video games on the TV while I was teaching, as if it was nothing, as if I wasn't there. So I mention this because I know you're having a strategic plan, and maybe this could be something that you look at. Other solutions would be anger management, anything like that. Already? Oh, jeez, okay. Well, my other thing was literacy, so, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Amy Triggs, and I'm here to share my experience as a teacher at Southwest Elementary Academia Bilingue and the hopes and expectation that changes will occur. During my 18 years teaching at Southwest, I have witnessed the level of support from the district diminish in the areas of knowledgeable administrators, targeted professional development, as well as curriculum and materials. As a dual immersion school, our needs are distinct and diverse. I want to focus on the area of curriculum as it can impact the most change. A few years ago, when it was announced that the language arts curriculum would be changed, as a staff, we focused on being proactive to develop solutions instead of just coming with problems. We invited several curriculum publishers to our school to present their programs. We weighed the pros and cons, looked at best practices, and consulted current research to determine which program would be the most beneficial for our students. As a doctoral student earning my PhD specializing in curriculum and teaching, I created the PowerPoint presentation that you now have to illustrate our decision-making process. I was invited to a meeting with several district-level decision-makers to discuss the programs and answer their questions since they had had the presentation for weeks prior to the meeting. I was basically filibustered, not allowed to speak, completely shut down. The program we desired was not purchased, but rather that which all the other schools received. This program, Ready Gen, was developed for a very different instructional model, a 50/50 program, rather than what we employ at Southwest, a 90/10 program. Not to mention that a majority of the Spanish materials are only available online or not at all. In fact, GRPS paid a private company, the Center for Applied Linguistics, to conduct an evaluation of our program, and they noted the delayed involvement of language schools in the pilot program. They also stated in their report regarding curriculum, and I quote, "The judgment of the staff should be seriously considered." Fast forward a couple of years, and now we are getting some traction. Certain leaders now understand that the current program is not suited for us, and we have been working since the beginning of 2022, each teacher three extra hours a week to create supplemental materials, being compensated at the planning room. create supplemental materials, being compensated at the planning rate, not the curriculum rate. So we weren't qualified to even help determine the next program, yet we are qualified to independently develop our own curriculum? It just doesn't make sense, and this is just one example. Our social studies and science curricula are also the same as the rest of the district, and we were not asked to contribute nor collaborate in those decisions either. Southwest Academia Bilingue Elementary and Middle High educate one of the largest student populations in the district, and our teachers are tired, tired of having to prove we are worthy, experienced, and knowledgeable about our own program and our own students, tired of working extra when that could have been prevented. I encourage all of you to question why this continues to happen and what needs to change.
Thank you very much. All right. Well, that brings us to our final, excuse me, our final, for the comment, we don't have any more to do. All right. Well, that will bring this portion of our meeting to an end, but we, I apologize. We do have a closed session, but before we get to that, superintendent's comments and then board comments.
So as we are closing out the 2122 school year, it has been a very challenging year for, I think, everyone, and I think that we have learned a lot around perseverance and grit. One of the things that we were able to do as we are closing out our school year is to kind of look forward to what we want to do and to get better, and I always believe in looking forward, using the past to kind of direct how we move forward. We had the opportunity, and one of the things I'm going to continue to encourage, is to celebrate our stories. It's always good to be able to dialogue about what's working well, where we have some opportunities for growth, and then also to be in solution. And one of the things that we do well is trying to celebrate our teams and our members, and I say that to kind of preface my comments around. Our safety and security team, we had the opportunity today to celebrate those team members, and many of you know our safety and security team are throughout our district. They attend board meetings, they attend parent-teacher conferences, they attend games, graduations, all sorts of celebrations, and they are the people who are behind the scenes who do lots of different work. We always celebrate our people kind of out front, ourselves, our leaders, our teachers, but I think it's also important to celebrate those people who are doing those things behind the scenes, because when things go wrong, that's when we're looking for those folks to kind of say what happened and where were they. And so they do go above and beyond. They engage a lot and have challenging conversations with not only our families and our staff and our community members, but even with us, and they do a lot of that background work. And so one of the things I would like to say in support of them is that they do help create a sense of belonging for our scholars and our community, and to just give them a shout-out, because I don't know that we always remember kind of those people who are behind the scenes doing a lot of the different things. And it doesn't mean that we're taking away from others, but I just wanted to kind of lift those staff members up as we are celebrating them for the closeout of a successful school year.
Thank you. Ms. Jaclyn, may we start with you for board comments?
I just want to congratulate all our graduates. One of the greatest privileges is to sit on stage as a board member and to see the faces of our graduates. As I was driving here tonight, I was just thinking about how few people get to watch graduates head-on as they're seeing their peers, give their final remarks, and imagining their futures. And you see joy, you sometimes watch them mourn when we hear of the loss of a student in their class, and a full range of emotions. It's also so powerful at Houston to see so many of you, whether they're teachers, educators, or family members, just the village that comes out to celebrate that really important step from childhood to adulthood. And so thank you to all the folks here at GRPS that have carried our children from kindergarten to graduation, and thanks for the honor to be able to get to sit on stage and celebrate with them. I also just wanted to lift up the Grand Rapids Public Schools Foundation and the MindShare event. I was, of course, remembering that today as we heard about our athletics, of which the foundation plays such an important piece. And our athletics bring so much pride to this district, which is how I felt tonight as we were able to celebrate our young athletes who are doing extraordinary things and bringing along with them all fourteen thousand of their peers that get to see GRPS in the publications touting athletics in this district. So thank you to all the folks again that make that possible, and thanks to the foundation for all their good work in support of our scholars. Thank you.
Dr. Flores?
I'd like to not be too wordy, but certainly to speak with purpose. I think that we all have a purpose here in life, so to speak, and those that are contributing to education, so much so. And in the spirit of celebration, I'd like to start by recognizing someone that was in the room earlier, the Reverend Kenneth Hoskins, who served as the president of the board and served a couple of terms. And I remember that when I was an administrator with the district and later as a teacher, he was always very, very supportive, and it brings me to the sense, or to the point that perhaps we need to have a system whereby we recognize some of those contributions from people who are present in our group, whether they're elected officials or maybe someone recognizes. I didn't want to interrupt anyone to do that, but I think that that's important. And I think when I talk about purposes, that I appreciate the teachers that have come forth and the student voice and the parent voice that we hear at these meetings, and I encourage that. I think that that's important if we're going to make relevant change for the benefit of improving instruction for our students and developing the outcomes that we need to see for our children, so please keep that up. And I appreciate the fact that we've included the change in culture in this district in our strategic plan, and that we are going to be transparent, and we're going to continue to improve this district, and it will be with collectivism, and that we don't ostracize or limit criticisms when they do come, because criticisms are complaints are what make us grow, and we need to develop those systems to channel that kind of energy to make sure that we're continuously improving instruction in Grand Rapids. And I support our administration, who I think is on track to doing that. Excellent individuals that I'm going to support and say, please continue to dialogue to make this place better. Thank you.
I'd like to really thank the district staff for really facilitating our families and students and scholars through another year. This one was different than the last couple, and so it brought another set of challenges as well, but thank you, that's important. The work you do is important. And then I want to thank everyone who came and gave comment. We appreciate you sharing with us, allowing us to get insight from the other side so that we can ask questions, to get more information, so that we can try to continue to make our district better. So thank you.
Okay. Reverend Matias?
Yeah, I really appreciate a lot of the conversation that we've had. We have had kind of extremes tonight, haven't we? We celebrated folks that broke records upon records, but we also heard some of the struggles that we're having. I have to say that I appreciate, and in the past, we've heard of folks that seem to be outside of our district talking to us, and I think we heard some folks that are within our district and committed to change, excuse me, change from within, so I appreciate that. I am excited to see that our athletics is slowly coming up. I remember my own children being in high school and trying to fight, it was so hard to fight for athleticism, and now to see that now our scholars are receiving scholarships for athletics, I think we're at the tipping point of that arena beginning to be more emphasized and appreciated, and then obviously the resources around that. Same thing with the arts, seeing a lot of our students getting into arenas of music and using their voice and their talents and writing is exciting. Again, that's been a challenge sometimes in our district when we're, you know, penny-pinching and trying to make it because of our budgets and shortcuts and so forth. So I really appreciate the parents coming up, the teachers coming up, certainly administrators and the work that they do, and again, I think what I'm hearing is that we're committed to making our district better, and again, the courage to come up and say that, and then figuring out ways to really find some solutions. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Downs-Lewis?
Yes, I echo everything that everybody else has said, but I also want to congratulate, especially congratulate our athletes. It's pretty phenomenal how successful they were. I also want to compliment Mr. Lewis and all of the others who put together all of the different graduations, and they were so well-run, and even though we were in the midst of lots of bad things happening elsewhere, our graduations were peaceful, the parents were excited, the kids were excited, so I compliment the people who were in charge of keeping things calm. And lastly, I'd like to congratulate the teachers who spent forty years in the classroom. I myself was a teacher, and I got through thirty-seven, but I don't know, forty years is a long time, a long time. And I think one was a parapro and two teachers, is that it? And the parapro has to be around school, helping all those kids. Forty years is a long time, so congratulations to those teachers.
And Ms. Grant?
So I just, I will jump right to the thank yous to our teachers, our families who came to share with us today. I'm so proud of the group who were here earlier and all the celebrations, and I also thank you all. As Reverend Matias said, there's always the contrast of as we're doing work, we have things to celebrate and we have a lot of good, but there's always going to be more work to do in a district of this size, serving so many different communities. And, you know, a few years ago, when we hired Dr. Roby, the conversation as a board was our next level of work was really clear. It was culture and it was curriculum. It was those two things. We know that we have work to do. We know that, you know, as a district, we just celebrated one hundred years, and there's need for transformation and change and growth. I want to thank you for being here, for fighting for your kids, and I ask you to stay with us, stick with us, hold us accountable, but we listen to you, we hear you, can't respond directly in public comment, but we do hear you, and we're willing to do the work. That strategic plan is the work, so please review it and hold us accountable to that. Fifteen years ago, I was in this district. It was a good district then, it's a good district now, and we'll keep working. Thank you.
Well, it looks like Ms. Grant read most of my notes, so I guess I don't have any comment, and my meeting is adjourned. Thank you.